...related. So as we're going into this audit and we're thinking about next steps, we need to have a concrete and something that we could share with the community in terms of a protocol for how we do customer service. And then additionally, if we have our own other conversations that are being happening with STA, is, do you have a customer service protocol in place?
The majority of the calls would come to OPS, and they're either forwarded to me via email or a phone call, conference call. And every time a complaint comes to me via email, I respond back, courtesy copy of Mr. Salas as well, how the issue was resolved.
I think what Mr. Vargas is asking is, how do we teach people how to deliver good customer service, not how do we respond to bad customer service? And we do have protocols for how our staff are supposed to behave and interact with our customers. And one of the most recent things is, last year, Mr. Salas initiated a retreat with STA specifically on customer service, and how do we conduct that? And I, if I'm not mistaken, that's what Mr. Vargas is asking. What do we do to provide good customer service, not how do we react when somebody complains about bad customer service?
Yes.
Do you want to mention that, Mr. Salas?
And again, as Dr. Turnquist brought up, we had a retreat that was, we had a facilitator come in, and we had an OPS STA retreat. And they went over different initiatives, specifically customer service, to your point. And I apologize, I thought you were, the day-to-day operational piece of it. So, but we did have someone come in and talk to all the management team, including office staff and the routers from STA and OPS in a joint format, and cover what does topics specifically, what does good customer service look like? How do we respond to certain scenarios? And they gave different scenarios for both teams to work through in joint efforts. Some of it was, you know, board activity, some of it was just giving us a bunch of scenarios, seeing how different teams addressed it. They looked at the comparative between how OPS addressed things, how STA addressed it, and then gave feedback individually and collectively to us as a team.
Great, and thank you, Dr. Turnquist. That is, I'm trying to be proactive, right? So this is, the questions are not like, what are we not doing now necessarily, it's, how do we start thinking forward around some of, what we do have in place, recognize what we do have, and then to what extent is it not meeting our current standards? The other reason, and this may be a question for Mr. Evans, is, or, actually, I'm not sure. This is, you know, one of our standards here is, you know, basically, you know, customer service being one of the measures from our strategic plan. And one of our strategies is conducting regular customer satisfaction surveys for internal staff. I'm just curious, what, you know, how are individual transport, individual departments, how we are doing that? I don't know if this is a question for Mr. Schmidt-Bonnie, how we do this for our different individuals, how we do it from the community, specifically for this department?
Yeah, I can speak to the, what's called the building satisfaction with TAC survey, which specifically looks at the building level, school building programs, et cetera's, satisfaction with the various departments they interact with up here at Central Office. We have survey links provided to the schools to click on. They select the individuals or the department they would like to respond to, those departments within this building, then have for their leadership dashboard that collects that information as it's entered and provides it. That's kind of our internal process for the building satisfaction piece.
Okay. And do we, that, so that's, does that include people in the community outside, or is this just people within the building?
For this purpose, it is just how are, how is the district office supporting the buildings, what kind of customer service, are they getting things of that nature? And we do use the climate survey and other things more for that
Okay.
community level.
As we do this, I know this is stated for internal staff, but as we're doing our audit, it might be something that, I mean, clearly, we're getting qualitative reactive feedback. And I would like to be able to collect feedback that's also telling the story of what we do well, what it does exist, as much as what we're not doing well. And so, you know, hopefully, we'll be able to work together as we conduct that audit, and we can include that in some of the data that we're collecting, so we have a better story to tell.
Absolutely. I can tell you, having participated in the audit, it was rather rigorous, and certainly, I imagine, good advice will be forthcoming.
Great, thank you.
Okay, are there any other, oh, Ms. Williams?
Mr. Salas, I just have one question for you. So, you're addressing every complaint that's coming through your office?
Well, what happens is, most of the parents who are sending them, they're not, they escalate, they want to speak to me specifically. There are staff that is on the front office that can answer some of the questions, whether it be what's the status of a bus, or why am I not receiving a bus? But most of the calls, the parents are asking to speak directly to me.
So when you come back, I would just like to see if the, if you have a tracking mechanism, I mean, if you're directly dealing with those complaints. I just am curious to see what that looks like, because, I mean, I think in this process, we're going to have to find some, some other ways. Obviously, your workload is very full, in addition to trying to get this solved, this problem solved, 100%, but you also, you know, dealing with these complaints. And so just kind of, what we're talking about is that customer service, and what, what does that look like? Because I just, I'm curious to see what that looks like for you with those complaints. If you're addressing every complaint and every parent, there's 53,000 students here, how many of those are you, it's commendable that you're answering all of those emails and phone calls, but I just, I also think there's got to be a better way to address those complaints, and kind of what your process may look like, whether that's something that you all have already have in place, and I don't need you to answer or anything today, but just maybe at your next update, at least kind of a summary of what that looks like for you as well. Because there may be other suggestions that we could possibly have to help fuel those conversations and really address those parent communications as well.
All right, thank you very much, and we look forward to more information from the audit. With that, we're going to move on to action items. J2A, oh, sorry, I forgot, J1F, Committees of the Board Update. I'm sitting here. Accountability Committee met September 13th, Mr. Scanlon.
We'll be discussing that in J2A, so I don't think there's anything to talk about at this point.
Okay. Budget and Audit, we just approved the budget, so we're, right now, good with that, and we'll hear more on the audit soon. Communications is meeting October 25th. Policy is meeting September 28th. Americanism, December 14. Student Assignment Plan, September 27th. Legislative, October 11th. Construction Manager at Risk, October 6th. Specialty Schools' Review and Recommendations met September 13th. Ms. Williams?
So, Dr. Kerberg and I, we're going to tackle this a little jointly. We did meet on the 13th. I know Mrs. Fay wasn't able to make it. But we really talked about, again, we're really hashing into the magnet recommendations and the academies at the moment. I'll kind of start on the quicker conversation. Mr. Schmidt-Bonnie has presented us with a lot of analysis, lots of data for us to kind of look through and ask a lot of questions. And so, I would even ask Mr. Ray if you could send that out to the whole board, so they can look at that and maybe have some questions about the academies and the classroom sizes, so that we can get input prior to a potential recommendation. We have added, we will be talking about, at an upcoming meeting, talking about the Career Center, so we'll be getting lots of data and information from staff. And then we really talked about more so the magnet recommendation. And at this point, with input from Dr. Kerberg and Mrs. Cohn and our committee team, really, we want to be very thoughtful in this process. And so we have decided we will be asking Mrs. Farmer to come join us in our October meeting, so we can start building a communications plan around whatever recommendations that we get. We will ask all of the executive directors to come, so that they can give input, because we would like to have the executive directors start to have conversations with their building principals. And especially around the magnet conversation, we also would like those principals to be invited to a future meeting, so they can give some direct input on their schools. And then we've also asked Mrs. Cohn after, and the rest of the EDs, I'm going to give them a little sneak peek, but really asking them to have a collaborative conversation with not only the principals that this will affect, but all of their principal colleagues, so we can, if we're talking about, you know, moving some dollars from one area, making sure that, you know, we're equitable across the district, and making sure that everyone has some buy-in. Presented a great document, Dr. Kerberg, I want to thank you for that. I know that Mrs. Fay has asked for that. And so really, we want to just make sure that we're doing our due diligence, and looking out far enough to communicate with the public and the families, so that they have an understanding of this before we make some very hard recommendations. But Dr. K, if you want to add on to that?
I would just concur. It's been a very deliberative, reflective process. One of the things we did was have a half-day workshop with the Student Assignment Plan Committee members. So we had approximately eight different departments in attendance. We did another half-day workshop on the topic of class size, which again, had another probably eight different departments represented. So, this conversation has probably been going on for the past year, just to make sure that we're really thinking about all the different moving parts, especially in light of a new student assignment plan coming into focus in 1718.
Ms. America or Mr. Vargas, did you guys have anything you wanted to add? You were both there. All right, so I just, it's moving, maybe not as fast as we would like it, but we have made some movement, and realizing that the communication to this is going to be one of the most important pieces of it. And so really, asking Mrs. Farmer to come and really help us, you know, start this process early on, so we're not waiting until six months before, or even the year before. We would like to have this communication process a year or two plus out, so that families can have input, you know, we can get community input as well. I think that's where, you know, we have seen, we have, we have some improvement in that area. And so, we really thought about being very open and transparent in this process, so that when we get to a final recommendation to the board, we will have crossed our Ts and dotted our Is, and made sure that everybody has had some input around this area. Thank you.
Great, thanks. I think we heard, oh, Mr. Scanlon.
I guess, with it being the Specialty Schools' Review and Recommendations, and dealing with our magnet programs, I know that in the past, that there's been a push at the legislative level of charter schools and everything. And I would just ask that you, as a committee, take into consideration, you know, we call them specialty schools and magnets, but I truly believe that they're charter schools. They're not your normal curriculum, you know, like Crestridge being dual-language, along with a number of other schools, that with that communication program, communication plan, that you come up with talking plans or talking points for board members, as I'm sure that it will come up in this 2017 legislative session, that we offer multiple different curriculums and different ways to educate students. And I think that that would be helpful as a board member, because I still am a believer that OPS provides a wide range of educational opportunities that I don't think the public outside of OPS are all aware of.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon.
That's great. Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, I think we heard tonight, that you guys meet this week, next week?
Uh, yeah.
Sometime.
Sometime.
I know.
It's on the calendar somewhere.
And Code of Conduct on September 26th. So we have lots of upcoming meetings next week. Mr. Snow?
Are these meetings, these committee meetings are public, right? Do we post them anywhere? So like, I'm saying, the reason why I brought this up is just because of the Specialty Reviews Committee, like, if there was a parent or a community member very concerned, and they wanted to be involved, even though it's not their meeting, is this posted, that they can at least sit in? I mean, they don't get a, but just so...
We have not invited the public to attend the committee meetings as we work through things, and discuss sometimes topics that are, you know, hashed through before we make final decisions. So, we always give, I think, the public opportunity for input on whatever decisions come about. So, I would, that's what I would say. Ms. Williams?
So, we talked about that specifically in the committee, and just, there's, part of it is, with recommendations of staff, there's some still sensitive, you know, conversation happening. But, you know, for me, it's, we want the public input. And so, building this plan, having conversations with principals prior to public feedback, I think is going to be helpful, because we can't afford to have, like what happened with Kennedy, it was in the paper before staff was notified. I mean, those are things that the EDs and other staff has brought to our attention of, okay, we want to be very mindful of this before we make these decisions. These aren't, we're not making a recommendation, this is what we want to do. We want to hear some thoughts that we have. There's a lot, a lot of scenarios. But being able to go to those building principals and let them talk with their staff prior to a community conversation, that is, I think that's going to be crucial in a community conversation, as well as making sure that the staff and everyone involved in that building have that input first. Once we have those conversations, we can, you know, have this conversation again. But I just want to make sure that the staff and administrators of those particular buildings, you know, we want some feedback from them first, because that is their buildings, they know their buildings better than anyone. I think we would be doing ourselves a disservice to kind of hash all of that out before we even really grasp it. I think it's, to me, it's similar to the Student Assignment Plan. There was a lot of unknowns, you know, lots of, we're throwing different ideas, well, what about this scenario, what about that scenario? So I just caution us on that at the moment, until we can at least get in with the staff and build a good communication plan.
I completely understand. My thing is that you just don't want, it happens no matter what you do, is people from the community, constituents come in and saying, we've already made up our mind before we went to them, or haven't really looked at all the options, but knowing the fact that they do have that opportunity to sit back in the, in that room, I mean, obviously, they don't get to speak, but to really hear that you guys are doing your due diligence, and really looking at what's best for the district and the kids that we serve, kind of can help that, but
Right. Well, and that should be, and that should be not just with this specific committee, it should be with all.
I agree with that.
But, and that was our conscious decision of meeting with the team and saying, okay, October, this is kind of what it looks like, November, this is what it looks like. And then being able to take those next couple of months of meetings, and really build up this communication plan.
What does it look like?
Because my thought, I'm, we're looking at two to three years, and don't quote me, but it's just kind of a guesstimate of, okay, where, where do we want to do this, and let's work backwards a little bit, so we have plenty of time to inform the community, engage them, whether it's a forum, whether, whatever that looks like. But having Mrs. Farmer in that conversation is going to be crucial for us, to make sure that we are communicating out to our community.
Fair enough, thank you.
I think it's very similar to the Student Assignment Plan, where we had a couple of different things that we finally narrowed it down to, and then took that to the public, and let them give us input on what they thought looked the best to them, which was helpful to get the community feedback. And I know, I remember a number of those meetings. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to action item J2A, Superintendent Evaluation Survey. And I'll let Mr. Scanlon speak to this topic, he's the chair of the Accountability Committee.
We had, as a committee, had, you know, presented, I think it was either the last board, or board meeting, or the board meeting prior, the matrix to which we were going to base any pay increase for the superintendent. And part of that was going to be a, a survey from principal leaders, executive leaders, and also from parents. And what we had decided at the committee was that, in order to be transparent and allow a third party to come in and collect and distribute that, that survey, so there would not be any perceived, you know, anxiety from, from our members that are taking the survey, that, that the administration would be collecting and analyzing that information. So, we decided a third party would be, would be best to, to do the survey, and then collect the results and report it back to the board. Three, three proposals were, were brought in. The, the one that is attached for the Category 1 Consulting, that was, that came in at approximately $12,500, and which was about $10,000 less than the, the next bid. So, we had talked with research and had asked their opinion on what, you know, who is this company, do they feel confident that they would be able to provide us with a, with a product, that there were two others, two other companies that had that, kind of that brand name. But this one, you know, I let, if you want to come up, Scott, and explain, what you explained to the board as far as the background of this company and your confidence in them?
Absolutely, very glad to do so. Category 1 is a new and rising star in the Omaha Evaluation Community. It grew out of the movement of ConAgra to Chicago. Both of the co-owners, co-founders of that firm came from ConAgra. Additionally, I will offer that, prior to joining ConAgra, one of the co-founders, Dr. Sarah Roberts, worked in research as an evaluator. So I am very familiar with their abilities, as I am with all who submitted a proposal. I certainly feel they are quite capable of returning a product of high quality that meets our standards for security, as well as anonymity, confidentiality, and the protections the board has asked for. I have spoken with Ms. Roberts, just to ensure, after the committee had suggested we bring this to you for action, that they can meet our deadline, that is, to begin this process immediately, and have all the results back by early November, to be able to merge with the quantitative data that will flesh out the entire model.
I, excuse me, I would just like to point out on the attachment, slide 17 of 20, that shows the milestones and timeline that we're looking forward to, or that we're looking to accomplish for, for the 2014, 2015 school year, for the evaluation. Ideally, for the, for this current school year, we will be doing this in the May timeframe. But we're just getting everything together, and we wanted to bring this to the board's attention, because this is, this is, you know, one of the main functions of this board is to evaluate the superintendent. We wanted to make sure that everybody understood why this is being recommended by the Accountability Committee. With that, I'll open it to any questions.
Let me clarify a couple of things, too. This would be a survey of principals and the Executive Council members. We would use the survey data for parents from the climate survey that's done in the spring for this particular school year. It's also 15, 16 school year. And the other point that I wanted to bring up is that Mr. Ray did have this item budgeted in the board budget for this particular school year. Mr. Snow, did you have a question?
So, two questions. Would the results of the survey be made public, or would that be a closed conversation with the board?
We had discussed that before, and I cannot remember what exactly...
The individual results would not be public, as far as what someone said, but the, but the overall becomes a part of the matrix, so it would be very public, because it'd be part of the calculation.
But, okay. And that was my main question, you kind of answered the next one as well. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve Category 1 Consulting to facilitate the distribution, collection, and reporting of the survey report results utilized for the superintendent's evaluation.
So moved.
Sarah, second?
Second.
So, motion by Mr. Scanlon, and second by Ms. Williams. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
America?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Underwood?
Aye.
Vargas?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Got it.
Aye.
Eight, aye.
Motion carries. With that, we'll move on to J2B, First Reading Series 5,000 Students, Part 2.
Good evening. This is the first reading of the Part 2 of the 5,000 series. As part of the input that I received the last time, we've made two changes, actually, three. Those are outlined in your attachments as revised. I'll highlight those two. First, in Policy 5506, we combined, we didn't see a need to have 5505, which just basically said, develop a student pupil transportation plan. So we essentially combined those. The red, the added wording is on page 404. Mr. Scanlon specifically asked if this applies to contracted services, and at this point, it does not. Those additions would have to be negotiated. So this is just specific to our transportation. The second was specific to Ms. America's question about the EpiPen on page, or Policy 5601. We've consulted, I've consulted with Health Services, and we've changed it to injectable epinephrine. So that's been updated in 5601. So with that, we've changed, removed 5505, which you were supplied, we've updated 5601 and 5506. And those were the changes that were recommended for policies, the second part of the 5,000 series.
Does anyone have, Mr. Scanlon?
I guess for, for the board's knowledge, and also for the public, how far along are we through the review of our, of our policies?
So this is the last section, and this is part 2 of that last section. So next, what you'll be getting is, we'll be going back through and making sure that we've got everything from the old policies and the new policies, and then we'll probably be bringing some onesies, twosies to the board and through the policy committee. And then we'll be finished with that, and then we'll be able to close down those old policies and just have the current policies posted. So we've made a lot of progress, and this is the end of it, essentially.
And could you just remind the public, since it has been kind of a longer process, who's been reviewing them, and, you know, what, what the process has been for the review?
So, pretty much, the owners of the policy, or the people that we think work with it on a day-to-day basis, review the content of them. The frameworks were created by Greg Perry, probably three years ago now, two and a half years ago. And then, through legal counsel, myself, we send them to the, the owners, they review and provide suggestions. And then we bring them back to you as information, and then the first and second reading. So there's been a lot of people involved with this. I think a lot of people will be happy not to have any more emails from me. I think Scott said pestering, was it pestering Scott said? No. Thank you.
Can you also share, we talked about in policy committee meeting at some point, just the communication of the new policies to all of our building principals and, and other folks, and making sure everybody has the new and updated, greatest and best. So can you share kind of what the thought process is there?
So we've talked a lot about different ways to get the information out and making it accessible. There, if you remember the Blue Books, if people were around when we had blue binders that had the policies in them, one of the problems that we ran in with the policy book is, if you remember the Blue Binders, they had every policy just flowing after each other, so it was hard to update. If you just updated one policy, it threw off the whole book. So, I'm looking at options of it, bringing back the Blue Binder in a limited capacity, so people have a hard copy, so that we can send things out and say, this replaces Policy 5601. We can email them 5601, and just replace it within the book. There is some people that still like hard copies and having one binder with them. We looked at different varieties of ways to display them electronically, so they're easy to... easy to manage and easy for people to search and find the information that they want. So, there's a lot of possibilities, but there's been a lot of interest from building principals to go old-school and go back to the Blue Binder in some form or not, so they have a hard copy of it. And I know you're a fan of hard copies, Mr. Scanlon, so I'll make sure you get one.
We, we all want one on our shelf at home, right? I think electronic, I think electronic works just fine.
I'll keep yours. I'll keep yours.
Ms. Williams.
I just want to thank you, Mr. Ray, for helping us work through all of these policies. You've done a lot of work and chased after us for feedback and others as well, and so, I just wanted to publicly thank you, and we, I also look forward to those onesies, twosies that you're going to send our way. I had to fit that in some kind of way.
It'll probably be heavy on the twosies.
Heavy on the twosies? All right. We'll take that.
And thank you for that, and it's, I couldn't have done it without legal counsel, Megan, and all the team that you see on the table here that review the countless emails and attachments that I send them to.
All right.
I mean, thank you.
So, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the first reading of the 5,000 Policy Series, Part Two.
So, moved.
Sarah, second?
Second.
So, motion by Ms. Williams, second by Ms. America. Is there any other further questions or discussions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Gotting.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Seven I.
Okay. Motion carries. Is there a motion to waive the second reading of the 5,000 Policy Series, Part Two? Hearing none. We'll move on to receipt of reports. There is the ESUCC Board Minutes on our reports, which is the Educational Service Unit Coordinating Council. With that, Ms. Williams.
I move that the Board of Education go on a closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, Dr. Turnquist, Mark Warnicki, and legal counsel, personnel, pending litigation, negotiations, real estate, and legal advice.
Sarah, second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Williams, second by Ms. Underwood. Roll call, please.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Gotting.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Seven I.
Motion carries. Let me remind the public, or let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, Dr. Turnquist, Mark Warnicki, and legal counsel, personnel, pending litigation, negotiations, real estate, and legal advice. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 10:07 PM.